Welcome, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call the June Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance today. Again, thank you very much. We could go ahead and look at the agenda. Actually, yeah, let's do the agenda first and then I'll bring up the part about the budget hearing. Those who are virtual, who want to submit questions, there are a couple of ways to do that, and we'll go over that and make sure that everyone understands. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting. Everyone had an opportunity to read. Okay, have a motion. And a second. Ms. Carnes?
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye. Thank you very much. Go ahead, and now we move on to the executive director's comments. Ron?
Thank you, Don. Good morning, commissioners. Just had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. First of all, you know, we've been dealing with the shutdown of pretty much our operations due to COVID. And there was some information in your packet related to some of the communications that we have with staff. Also, in your packet, we created a reopening schedule. Since you do see that businesses are in different phases of reopening, and we wanted to be able to get back to be able to provide those critical services that we do under normal operations. So we're actually, we're finding out that we're actually having to do specific reopening plans based upon different departments. It just really depends on the type of business that the departments do. We have, like, some operations that deal primarily, most of their business is interfacing with the public. And just, there's different kinds of work plans that have to be in place to ensure our employees' safety as well as the safety of the public that we interact with. So there's a little bit more work that we have to do in those instances. And there are some areas, because they do have adequate office space, and there's adequate room for social distancing and things like that, that they're pretty much already in a situation where they can welcome staff back. But our plan is, first of all, to make sure that all of our work, our work, offices, departments, that they're safe. Because we know that, we know employees are, you know, they're concerned about themselves or families, and, you know, so are we. We have to make sure that we do everything we can, especially in those areas that interface with the public, that we have all the safety protocols in place. And not only that, that we have protocols in place for employees that come to work, that they, that we have a protocol in place in terms of them being able to do an assessment to make sure that they're healthy before they come to work, so it doesn't impact the other people that are here. So we're working, we're working through that. We're looking at different phases within the organization, and hopefully, around sometime in July, it will be close to full operations and interfacing with the public. You know, some of it also dependent upon the HUD waivers that are in place where we're not necessarily having to do certain things. But at the end of July, those waivers are gonna expire, so we have to be prepared to start doing business as normal. But we don't know that for sure, but we're just preparing for that. Trying to do what we can to, like I said, address all employees' concerns, and situate the offices physically the best way we can to ensure employees' safety and also the public's The other item, and this may take a few minutes, but I think it's really important. We know that, you know, the COVID and a lot of the issues that have come with that, not just the pandemic itself, but how it's impacted certain communities, especially communities of color. And also, with the issue with the, we were dealing with that up till a couple of weeks ago, and then we had the death of George Floyd. And there's been a number of things that have come out of that. Really, both of them sort of highlighted some larger societal issues that we really happen to grapple with. And just within our organization, we know that, you know, opinions and comments have been running high and rampant. And I know that the board has been made aware of a particular incident that was brought to my attention. I just wanted to assure the board that, you know, we did take care of it according to our personnel policy, that I did speak with the appropriate personnel, that we did handle it. We also had another situation, sort of on the opposite spectrum, but still sort of in the, I wouldn't say insensitive nature, but it was the wrong platform to use to voice that particular concern over the business platform. And that situation was also addressed. And I know that Joe Bay wanted some comments to say afterwards. But anyway, I just wanted to show the board that we did, according to our, you know, personnel policy, we did address those issues and felt that they were warranted in terms of the action that we did. Getting back to the two topics with the pandemic, and I just jotted down some notes, and I just want to make sure that I covered that. Now, the COVID-19 has disproportionately impacted people of color, because they tend to live in these urban areas, high concentrations of poverty, with limited access to healthcare, and primarily have jobs that didn't adequately equip them for the exposure to the virus. And with the downturn the economy due to COVID-19, people of color, including African-Americans, were disproportionately impacted with job loss, which in turn exacerbated the housing inequality that they already faced. So we, you know, we know that these number of moratoriums are in place to stop evictions, and it's not only within, you know, public housing authorities, but it's in general. So those moratoriums on evictions have ended in some instances, and landlords are, they've already rushed to the courthouses to start eviction proceedings. They actually had to postpone those eviction proceedings because there were just so many, and just thinking of the impact of the number of people that we displaced. I mean, the rent didn't, the rent didn't go away, it was just sort of kicked, pushed down the road, but those that passed through rent is gonna be due. And so those very families, predominantly African-Americans, that lost their job because they were more in the service sector industry that were impacted the most, they could potentially be impacted more when these moratoriums are lifted. Individuals and communities of color habitually experience acts of police brutality, such as brutality that led to the death of George Floyd. All citizens should expect that the law enforcement is enforced humanely, uniformly, and fairly. One should not expect a routine encounter with law enforcement could potentially be an encounter with death, as was the case of George Floyd. However, this happens far too often, especially to African-American males. Through the pandemic and the death of George Floyd, empathetic, social voices have brought to light reports of larger societal issues that have made people of color, especially African-Americans, more vulnerable to the catastrophic events that I just spoke of. And we primarily talk about inequalities in education, healthcare, income and wealth, and housing. When you speak of housing inequality, you speak of education, healthcare, criminal justice, income, and wealth. Housing is very determinative of one's education, access to healthcare, law enforcement, wealth, and income. What that primarily means is that location does matter in terms of your quality of life outcomes. Families that live in areas with high concentrations of blight and poverty are less likely to have positive outcomes in education, health, criminal justice, income, and wealth. These inequalities are primarily symptoms of historical discriminatory housing practices and policies. A quick review of some of those practices and policies, I'll do that now. And I was basically trying to frame it and put it in the framework that we would understand, given our business is a redevelopment and housing department. Or just to give some, some things that, some of these historical discriminatory housing practices. African-Americans were forbidden from living in the first public housing development. If you look back in history, there were, when, when the federal government wanted to build public housing within certain localities, the local officials said it was okay for them to build, but they, as long as they didn't allow African-Americans from living in those public housing developments. Then as time went on, and white families were able to move to the suburbs, they left, so they allowed African-Americans to move into the now obsolete public housing developments that were primarily in densely populated areas in the urban areas. Another discriminatory practice I'd like to talk about was during World War II, servicemen were given the GI Bill, and I'm sure that you all familiar with the GI Bill. The legal term of it was called the Servicemen's Readjustment Act of 1944. And what that did is start to provide returning servicemen with benefits. Among those benefits were low costs, mortgages, high school vocational education payment for tuition, and living expenses for those elected to attend college, low-interest loans for entrepreneurial veterans wanting to start a business. Though the law was deemed to be a political and economic success, there was one segment of veterans who were denied many of those benefits, the bill's benefits, and those were African-Americans. One of the more important benefits that African-American servicemembers were able to take advantage of were low-cost mortgages. In theory, these benefits allowed all veterans to purchase homes in the quickly growing suburbs, homes whose values would rise steadily in the coming decades, creating new wealth for vets in the post-war era. However, black veterans were not able to take advantage of this benefit, because banks would not make loans for mortgages in black neighborhoods. Additionally, they faced rampant racism if they attempted to buy into suburban neighborhoods, which at the time were overwhelmingly white. From redlining discriminatory practices, fencing off areas where banks, including federal and local government, would avoid investment and assistance based on community demographics to planning, and zoning laws, law practices that drove up the price of land and housing by established minimum lot sizes and green space, history was clearly discriminatory practice that limited African-Americans the same housing opportunities as a general society. A year ago, I had the opportunity to speak with a professor at Christopher Newport University, and he was doing a project, which is still ongoing, called Living Together, Living Apart. And I just wanted to point out some of the things that he has talked about, some of his, he has actually looked at some of the maps that they use for redlining, and he's been able to draw a number of conclusions just from the research he's done looking at those maps, looking at the census data. In Living Together, Living Apart, he says, "Most cities in the U.S. are nearly as segregated now, and Hampton Roads is no exception, as did in 1968 when Fair Housing Act passed." Hampton Roads is nearly 50/50 black-white, Finn said, "and the statistical diversity has not translated into racially integrated neighborhoods." Present-day urban segregation is not a matter of happenstance, it didn't happen naturally, meaning that people wanted to congregate amongst themselves, he says, "but it was a well-organized system of discriminatory federal housing policies dating to the Great Depression," which I did illuminate on a couple of them when I started out. The governor gave a big, a huge push toward accumulation of wealth to the right-worthy middle class, at the same time overtly and indirectly that the opposite for blacks. Finn said he blames federal housing policies for engendering today's vast wealth gap. After World War II, white families were able to purchase subsidized homes in suburban developments, accumulate wealth, as their homes appreciated in value, and pass that wealth on to their children. The Economic Policy Institute demonstrated even greater disparity. Black families' median wealth is about $11,000; white families' median wealth is about $134,000. And that's all a result of the past discriminatory housing practices that are now becoming a part of the whole discussion that we see now, starting out through the pandemic and also resulting from the death of George Floyd. Here we are today witnessing how discriminatory practices of the past have exposed certain segments of our society, more so than others, to the ravages of the pandemic, as well as the ravages of social and racial injustices. As an organization, we may not be able to, in our trade as an organization, we may not be able to address all the societal ills that have come to light from the pandemic and the death of George Floyd, but we do have a part to play in rectifying some of the historical patterns of housing discrimination. Through our Housing Assistance Program, Supportive Services, and Community Redevelopment, to the Choice Neighborhood Program, NRHA has a great opportunity to rectify some of the local historical inequalities that force low-income, predominantly families of color, into pockets of poverty that have been segregated from the greater Northwood community. For example, the St. Paul's Transformation will give NRHA and City of Northwood the ability to shape neighborhoods and communities that people with mixed incomes and races can live, work, and play together. As an organization, I mean, that's, that's our business, but as an organization, as probably some of the issues that we've had sort of illuminated, and some of the things that I've heard, we probably need to have a reexamination of our, of our culture, especially in light of the day's events. Because, you know, we have, we have the business, which is the mechanics, but in terms of culture, are we really sensitive to the things that we need to be sensitive to in terms of the business that we're in, the residents that we serve, but also the employees? We have a really diverse workforce. And we really, do we truly, are we truly sensitive to that? Are we able to understand people of different backgrounds and truly appreciate the things that they have to go through? So as far as, I would say, as far as our next move, one of the things that you'll see, we are doing a, we're doing an organizational assessment, which speaks of the mechanics, the business part of it. And one of the things that I had talked, talked to HR before I first came on, just from hearing some of the things that probably needed to be addressed with organization, we need to have a sort of a development of our, what are our true cultural values? So we don't have the incidents that we had had, so it's not only something that's a reaction to what's going on, that all of a sudden these things are important, but this should be important all of the time when it comes to addressing issues of race, inequality, housing, income inequality, and just amongst ourselves as a diverse organization. So I would say that our next step would be to sort of try to address, what are our, what are our cultural values? And respecting, having, I would say, recognizing everyone as being equal partners in this, and making sure that there's fair and equal treatment in terms of job opportunities, tops of, as far as promotions, things like that, that that should be part of our culture, should be part of our culture that managers also have that, has that heightened sensitivity, and that they're evaluated on those cultural norms. So in terms of an organization, me as an executive director, I want to ensure that we have cultural values and embrace a lot of the things, the larger societal issues, especially how we deal with each other as human beings within this organization. So that's all of my comments that I had.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
I have a comment. This is taking my chairs. I'm missing a head off.
Could you speak up, honey? I'm sorry, the mask is a little hard.
Actually, I have a comment, and this is speaking of, I will say, a little bit of my work with the NAACP and all. I think historically, and then reading things and documents, take it back in the process of what's in its line, every person has implicit biases. I have different implicit biases to Don. Don has different biases, implicit biases than Rose, and did. And I wasn't alive around the GI Bill, but I did see a movie done before my time called The Thin Line Between Love and Hate. I know you know what I'm talking about, this role. And implicit bias has a very thin line. I use implicit bias lightly, because I believe everyone has it. I try to stick away from racism, because the word racism is a deadly word. It is a dart, and when you throw it, you better be making sure that you hit it accurately. So when I use the word implicit bias, I think it's the unconscious actions of not just myself, but every person, just not understanding what those biases might be, you know? So in doing that, you have to understand that in order for me and Don and we and Dick to have a conversation of surrounding race, or anything of those sensitive topics, Don has to understand, I have implicit biases, and I have to understand that Don has implicit biases, right? But when that isn't understood, and when I mean understood, it means that there's no care for me saying that you have implicit biases. If I say, "Don, we have a problem," or I don't say, "Don, we have a problem," I believe Don said something, and I reported, right? And word gives back that Don went to Dick and said, "I don't know why Joe Dillard is being so sensitive about the situation." It's a thin line between implicit bias and crossing the line. Now, I'm not accusing anything, any type of thing called racism, you get what I'm saying, Ron, especially as an African-American man. But when I point out that it's implicit bias, and your response is, "I don't understand why people are being so sensitive," that's when I have the question is, for HR, if you are doing counseling, and it is counseling, what is the objective of it? Because if the person that is being accused has that type of reaction, and the accuser has a different type of reaction, then we need to revisit the personnel policy. Now, I know Richard is in a new position, and I mean new position as, for HR, not just here at NRHA, at HRT, where you work at the federal level, this is a different type of ballgame. We're talking about HR, personnel responsibilities, policies. It was not just dusting off, dust off the book, turning a chapter five, and this is how we react to it. We're in a different ballgame when it comes to implicit biases. So I understand what you're saying, Ron, as far as the, I love what you said about the cultural rights, because you have to understand biases and bias before you move forward. So I'm just hoping that not only that situation be rectified, but something change in a policy where, as an African-American man, and you as well, if I believe that Don is being racist to me, historically, since slavery, it should never be, Joe, you should address Don directly now, because you never want to directly address the person that you feel like is oppressive, you know? So some things need to change in the policy, and I'm definitely not a HR person, but I am a human and understand everything. And from the bias standpoint, I'm not calling anyone racist, but we all have biases, you know? And in order to understand it and move forward, you have to accept those biases and try to fix the situation. And how you react to those biases can definitely have that thin line that we're talking about like in the movie, to pitch you into a category that we call the racism. That's all I have, Don.
Other comments?
That's good.
Rose?
I'm in the business with Joe, and I'm, I'm trying to tell that, yes, we do need to work on a lot of these situations that go on. Because when a person comes to, when the representative comes to you and says, "Well, this manager is doing this and saying this," and then, when you hear it so many times, it's like it just goes over their heads. And this person has lived in that neighborhood with that manager, and is not, never corrected, whether she's white or whether she's black, or different type of religion. I mean, person is still going on, and I've seen it too many times, and nothing has never been done. And, and it's a bad feeling, because when nobody don't take and listen, listen, then you are just talking to the wall. And it's got to be corrected. And if there's a committee, or there's a learning thing that could be put out there, it needs to be put out there.
Like, when I talk about the cultural values, this, you know, like Joe, like you mentioned, policies, now, all of that stuff is off the table. This is sort of, and I've gone through one of my previous job, all of that stuff is just so like thrown out the window, it's sort of, I, I mean, there's sort of boundaries, but other than that, it's an employee sort of democratic process where everybody has a, everybody has a seat at the table. And you just need to help somebody who's experienced to be able to facilitate it. So it's not, well, the personnel policy says you can't, you don't, you don't even address that. It's sort of an organic kind of thing. And then what the result is, like I said, a democratic process where everybody sort of has a seat, and it can be done. And then what you end up with is, these are the values that we need to, as an organization. It should reflect what the composition of the organization is. It's just to make sure that, you know, it's always governed by fairness and equity and things like that, but it still has to be sensitive to the organization and the diversity of the organization and being inclusive. But it is not governed by existing policies. So the result of it could be that we'd have to modify or get rid of some of the current policies that we do have in place. That may be the result of. So, but that's something I feel like that we need to address, which, like I said, we had that conversation before COVID, but I think now, more so than ever, that we really need to address those, the type of things that we are hearing and seeing to be able to address and to continue on to move forward as an organization.
Other comments? Welcome, Suzanne.
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness.
All right, then. People had a look at the development activities report? Any questions or comments on that? As you can see on the side, wherever, if you're familiar with the pages, are there. If not, I think we'll go ahead and take a look at the budget presentation. And again, go ahead. Before we get started, I just wanted to make sure that everyone who is virtually attending understands that if you're calling in, you can use star three to have your question put forward. If you're using your tablet or computer or smartphone, there's a box that says your name, and then a question. Type in your question if you want, and then submit. Did want to make it clear that you're not required to have a question. If you want to just listen, then you can just hit, put your name in, and then just hit submit, and that would be fine. But again, callers, star three, computer folks, put your name and then, your question in the box, and then submit it. We will also, as we normally do at the end of our meeting, have opportunity for comments. So again, just wanted to make sure those were understood before we go ahead into the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? So, can I? Sure. Laura, L-A-U-R-A, R-A-T-H. Speak up. Okay. So we're here this morning to go over the FY 2021 proposed budget. I know at this point, you've seen a series of presentations, and the same presentation was delivered last week to the Budget and Finance Committee. On Friday, May 29th, you all should have received in your inbox on your iPads an electronic copy of the proposed budget. On May 31st, this public hearing was advertised in the Compass, and it has also been advertised on NRHA's website, Communications has done a Facebook post, and they've also sent a news release out to all of the local media contacts. Just a quick recap of how we, how we got here and some background information. The FY 2021 proposed budget is an agency-wide effort. We've met with department heads, managers, directors, the executive team, Mr. Jackson, the Budget and Finance Committee. The budget does not include any reductions to service delivery. We talked a lot last month during the balancing presentation about the impacts of COVID and how we're not quite sure what they are yet and what that means. That kind of dovetails with the last bullet about a budget amendment in October after we've done year-end and can really align all the numbers. Also, we spoke a lot last month about the defunding- Also, we spoke a lot last month about the defunding of vacant positions. So as a reminder that we're down about 40 budgeted positions compared to the previous year. There is currently a hiring freeze and a halt on discretionary spending. Those will continue into FY 2021. And we are fully utilizing the earnings from the Oakmont Merrimack properties. That's about $2 million and they are appropriating some reserves to balance the budget. Before I leave this slide, I just want to point out there are two changes from the presentation that you saw last month and I want to highlight them so there's no confusion. The first one is that there's an additional appropriation, so an additional use of reserves in the amount of $120,000 beyond what you saw last month. This is for the DRPT transportation program. If you recall back in February, we presented a current year budget amendment to fund the gap period of that grant. We thought we would hear back in April if we're going to get the grant, which would start in October, and we haven't heard anything yet, I assume because of COVID, there's some delays. So it is $120,000 to fund about three and a half months of that program. And the second change is that the merit increases will not be funded in fiscal year 21 due to the timing of the decision. And given that the budget document was already complete, they are reflected in the numbers, but they will not be executed on. And that, including fringe, is about $695,000 overall. When you receive the approved budget, there'll be a schedule of some type in there that will outline for you what you should expect to see in each of the projects and programs as the year moves along in terms of reductions by not getting the merit increases.
And we'll go over this a little bit more at the budget workshop, but because we don't, we haven't fully captured the impact of COVID and we just felt that at this time, that was probably something that we couldn't commit to in the budget wise in terms of the merit increases. Now, if things start to, after, say like toward the end of the year, if things look like there's a little bit more promising in terms of like revenues and things like that, it looks a little bit more optimistic, there's a possibility that we could bring it back. Maybe not fully to the extent that we wanted to initially, but there may be some opportunities to do that. But at this point, I mean, we're not the only organization. I mean, there's some that, you know, that are furloughing, things like that. But we just feel like that it'd be difficult for us, given this environment financially, to be able to commit to merit increases. And like I said, if we'll be able to go a little bit more into detail there.
Laura, you're saying that the $120,000 hopefully will be eventually showing up?
We will not receive the $120,000 back when the grant starts. It's my understanding that you can't use prior expenses, use the new grant to cover prior expenses. So there's a little X factor involved. Of course, because of COVID, I don't believe that that program is operating right now, but we are still seeing some expenses in that project, not to the magnitude of the February budget amendment, but there are still some vehicle expenses, of course, insurance and labor costs and things of that nature that are being paid from that.
Thank you.
This probably just shows a high level of the FY 2021 proposed budget. It's approximately $121.4 million. This is less than a 1% difference, about $14,000 when you compare it to the FY 2020 approved budget. FY 2020 started with a budget of $111 million and then there've been a series of seven or so budget amendments throughout the year, bringing them almost to a less than 1% difference. So these percent breakdowns between the divisions, housing, development and other programs, they're on par with what we've seen in previous years. Of course, housing is comprised mostly of the Housing Choice voucher program, which is about 53% of that total and the other public housing communities, which are about 30% of that total. The development slice includes the capital fund, which is about 45% or $20 million of that total. It also includes the privately managed properties is a big ticket item in there. And that smaller slice, the 5% on the bottom, the other programs, that's the things we've talked about at the last few meetings, core business services, project development, financing, this building or specialized maintenance division and communications, government relations and those types of activities. Moving on to the next slide, this is similar to the last. This is just giving you a look at the revenues coming in. As in the past, we're funded predominantly from HUD grants. That makes up 61% of our revenue stream. So that includes, of course, the operating subsidy for the low-income public housing communities, the Housing Choice voucher program. Tenant revenues are 22%. So that category is mostly rent payments. The rent payments at Oakmont Merrimack and privately managed are rolled up in there. And the last, the big slices up there is the city grants, which account for 11%. When we met last month, I think there was still some question about the status of city funding and we are receiving our general fund support from the city in the amount of 1.3 million, which we've received steadily the last few years. The next slide, we have some expenditure items. I'm not going to go too into detail here. We've seen a lot of this information before at the expenditure presentation a few months ago. There's not too much change when you look at it year over year and how the categories shake out. Program costs are, of course, the largest percent of the expenditure budget. A lot of that group is the housing assistance payments, the HAP payments, and we can expect to see that group continue to get larger as more residents move to the Section 8 platform. Capital and multi-year programs. This slice includes about 20 million of planned capital fund spending for fiscal year 2021. So that is more capital fund spending than we've had budgeted the last few years. And of course, labor and employee benefits in total account for about 9% of total expenditures. And just one point I want to make here is that this is the direct labor and direct benefits. There is another component of employee costs that we talk about in the budget book that are indirect labor and so they're spread and allocated to the various projects and programs through a mathematical equation. And so they're not directly reflected here. And moving on to the last slide, this is probably our shortest budget presentation that we do. These are also some bullet points that we've displayed before fiscal year 2021, goals and objectives. And of course, long-term fiscal stability and planning has been up there for quite some time and we continue to work towards that effort. Asset repositioning to increase revenues and mitigate shortfalls. Earlier this week, the RFP for organizational and operational efficiency that Mr. Jackson referenced earlier, I believe it was posted. And lastly, as we noted in the fall, we'll be back after mid-year and having a chance to look at and crunch the COVID numbers to see where we are. And we're at the end now. Just another reminder that Monday at 10:00, there is a commissioner's work session. There is a, you can come in person and there's also a virtual platform. I believe the link to that has been sent out already and that is from 10:00 to 12:00. And then we will be back to consider budget approval on June 25th. So a special board meeting on June 25th for budget approval. And that's all I have.
I just wanted to add that with the merit increases, I really hate that we had to table those for this, especially with the great effort that our staff has done during COVID. I mean, they've gone above and beyond just keeping things, especially mission critical, being able to operate under those circumstances. You know, people putting themselves in sort of forms way to some degree and still being able to provide services to our residents, to the public. So that's unfortunate, but I really hate to do it. Whenever there comes the opportunity for us to be able to restore that, I'd like to be able to do that. But we'd still like to be able to somehow, we're still looking if there's some way that we could make sure that, you know, we could address especially what our employees have done during COVID. We'll look for ways to at least reward them for their efforts doing that. So we're not closed. For now, we have to table the merits, but we're looking for other ways to be able to reward staff for their efforts, the things that they've done to keep us to where we are being able to, in terms of operation during COVID. Yes.
Question for you. Because I know this probably, I'm not sure if Jennifer's on the phone.
Yes.
Where your staff, like Laura's here, et cetera, are you guys considered essential employees ended up under the hazard pay act? Right now, I know that the Heroes Act is going on to the Senate side and I know Jennifer's probably tracking it. President Trump says dead on arrival, but there's certain parts, portions of it that are being debated. Hazard pay, that Romney also has a bill for hazard pay. I'm just wondering, have you guys determined if you do qualify for those hazard pay?
Virginia or, I don't know, Virginia, Jennifer, Virginian, are you? Because I know she's been tracking a lot of the funding, but I don't know for sure, but we'll look into that and see if that, maybe that's a way to be.
I think one of them, the Heroes Act, it says this backdated to January 20th. And under Mitt Romney, it's like made when it's the federal dollars for the.
Federal, okay. All right, we'll take a look at it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Virginia. I'm sorry I was on mute. No, we will definitely take a look at that.
Are there any other questions on the presentation?
Just a technicality, that work session, that that's not, that doesn't require a forum or an in-person number, you know, so that we could all theoretically call it if we wanted to.
Donna Mills and I have had conversations about those committee meetings and work sessions, so we can provide some details by email.
I know that the committee meetings, you know, you need to have an in-person forum of some sort. I just didn't have the work session, but at that, and you'll make that definition.
It's very similar.
Yeah.
So it'll be pretty much the same rules.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So what are we doing? Are we picking struggles? Or we have to come in?
No, usually what we do is we send out a thing saying who's coming and then if we have a group that requires notifications to public, that's what we'll do.
Can we just nominate them?
Notification has already gone online and there's an actual platform for participation.
So it's going to be a whole meeting depending upon how many people show up. Again, in the past, it was more about if you had a question come in and that person would deal with you one-on-one, but now we're doing much more of the public input. So are there any, no further? And I guess we'll open it up and see if there are any questions from the public on the budget. Did we receive any call-ins or write-ins?
Good morning, commissioners. We currently have no callers with questions nor no questions submitted online.
All right, I'll ask one last time. As those of you that may be doing this virtually, who haven't had an opportunity to call in or write in, I'll give you next 30 seconds or so to do that. We would encourage people to do that if they can, so that we have public input. Did we receive any questions or written comments?
No, sir, commissioner. We're still without questions from the web or via phone.
All righty, thank you very much. Then I will go ahead and call the public hearing to a close. Thank you very much.
The Access Live event is in music hold.
Uh-oh.
Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my need for today?
I appreciate that. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we're without music. Let's go ahead and take a look at any comments about the previous month's activities, accounts receivable, any of that. Did your, did yours square back up or is it still?
Yes, my only, my only comment is that on page 43, the comments below the graphs on mine are unreadable.
Questions, I'll go along with Dick. Early on in mine, the letters and numbers were spread all out, one on top of the other and all of that. But when I looked at it today, it seems to have come back together.
What record is that?
Page 43, an agent accounts receivable. And it's like certain letters aren't printing or something. You can sort of, you know, if you work hard on that, you can read it.
It doesn't look like that.
At the bottom, the comments at the bottom.
Comments at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm a gibberish.
Yeah, that happened to mine, a couple of them.
Yes.
Maybe we'll provide a written copy of some commissioner's version?
Yeah, I sort of picked out what most of it was saying and I think it's mostly standard comments from my previous.
Commissioner's version, the board packet is also online on the NRHA website, but we can provide a part copy for commissioner's version.
Okay. Others have the same, similar issue? Like I said, I had it today. It seemed to coalesce again. Okay, if nothing else, then how about housing operations? Any questions on those? If not, I'll move on then to new business. Is per year?
I'm sorry. I said I have a proposal for new business. I'm sorry, my colleague, Alton Albert, here as well. Commissioner Albert and I have been talking, for some time, we've been kind of drilling down into ideas that the board has previously addressed about, one, having a retreat in the fall that would help us just, you know, just govern better and have better processes and help give Mr. Jackson some priorities, which every time I say that, I'm so sorry because it's like, push, you know? The other thing we've talked about is the idea that we as a board really need to be able to have substantive, thoughtful and productive conversations about race. And how we do that, how we begin that conversation. I think for, it was important before the happenings of two weeks ago, three weeks ago, because there's happenings that are going on for years, they just weren't more visible with Mr. Floyd. And, you know, I've become increasingly, I have an increasing sense of urgency around beginning to educate ourselves and having a framework for some conversations that are appropriate. And so I would suggest that perhaps. And, and so I would suggest that perhaps we, we read a book. We start our journey with some, some reading, some learning, with the idea that we would be ready to discuss that, either carve out some agenda time at a meeting so that it would be an open discussion or, or something that we would delve into with facilitator at the retreat. And so if that idea is, is acceptable, you know, I think, you know, there are a number of really great resources. If we all have a copy of White Fragility, you know, and so that might be a good place to start. Alfonso and I have other readings as well. If that doesn't, you know, if that doesn't resonate with you. But I'd really like to hear your thoughts as a group as, as to how we proceed with this, you know. Again, in the context of understanding we're a public body and this is not meant to, you know, we want to continue to be transparent about that and not, you know, we don't want to discuss a book that it turns out where we're making houses and procedures without the benefit of a, of a public process. We, we have to guard ourselves. We know all that. But I, I think that the very least, the very least we can do at this point would, would be to spend some time and, and, and read.
Yes. Suzanne, interestingly enough, Joe put, with several ideas and several comments prior to beginning here about along the very same line.
Did I say what he said?
No, no, no.
I mean, kind of.
He said it more.
No, I mean, but we, I didn't kind of dip you correct.
No, no.
But it was very, very much in the same vein of we needed to have discussions about certain things that we haven't had in the past. And I think your idea of having it be part of a, an ongoing process as well as not culminating, but having a, a meeting or having a discussion as part of a meeting with, again, some preparation. I don't want to call it preparation, but some ideas of some readings, some discussions, looking at some resources prior to that. And that, I think that's absolutely appropriate. And I would encourage, I guess, that you and Alfonso are working to come up with a sort of retreat, if that's what we want to call it. And, you know, a portion of that be this particular item, then I absolutely support that.
I think that we, we already agreed, you know, kind of had some consensus around having a retreat sometime in September, some, I've got some folks that I've been talking to about, you know, facilitating and helping us organize that, keeps us on track. I, but for myself, and I think that the retreat is necessary and important. And, and I think that having, you know, a deeper facilitated conversation about racism and systemic racism and all these things that we, that I get sometimes nervous about, you know. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to defer any longer those kinds of conversations, you know. So I mean, I think that, you know, yes, we want to do that retreat, but I think that between now and September, you know, we, we could read a couple of books. We could do a couple of YouTube videos. We could at least expose ourselves to, you know, to, so that our, so that we can have some conversations before that. We can get in the habit, the discipline of having those conversations. That we can, we can sort of work through the uncomfortableness of that. And then when it gets to the retreat, you know, we'll, we'll be ready to, to continue that good work. And, and so along those lines, all the, you know, you know, Joe, I, I pulled out the White Fragility book because we all have it, but there are a million other really great books. I, you know, have read anything that you?
There's some books on it, because of biases. And it is, I don't know if you were listening to our conversation on the way here, because we're saying the same exact same.
So sorry.
Well, I agree with you. I think, I think it should be sooner rather than later, Don, especially we're sitting here and we're charging Ron with cultural values and want to see a change. I think the more we can understand and grasp through reading, what we would like to see amongst ourselves as a board, I would be willing to say have a book by the next meeting or rewrite reality by the next meeting. You know, I'm going to lean on you and Alfonso on that, but I would like for us to kind of start having these, maybe even listen to minutes conversations by the next board because if we don't, if we don't do it amongst ourselves.
And it's just, and you know, it's easy to put it off and we've always been, so if, if there's, yes.
And I think that reading is fine and everything, but the conversation between everybody, the conversation is going to be the most important because we get, everybody get to express how they feel. And I was in, it was, I was in a store with a lady yesterday and she, she was white and I was black and we were talking about George. And, and the conversation came up and, and she first said that, well, he had a record and everything and nobody's honoring him like this. I, so I didn't say anything. But when she got ready to get up, I said, can I ask you something? Do you have a child? She said, yeah. I said, even if your child was misbehaving and I taught the right thing, was it okay for somebody to stand on his neck until he died and you were able to watch it? She said, no, that wasn't right. And then we got into a conversation. And before she down, she said, I understand. And you were right. No child should have died like that. Nobody's child. And that, just that little small moment changed her feelings, I think, or changed, and then we can compensate because we are all, we are all family here. And I don't think nothing of one of us would say that would hurt each other.
Well, I think Suzanne, you now have some sort of marching orders and putting something together. I do agree that something separate and apart would be beneficial more than, okay, you know, we got the next hour to do this and then we're going to talk about something else.
No, absolutely.
So, so having this as a specific subject, a specific time and place, I think is clearly what needs to happen. And so give us some.
So if we have consensus, perhaps we could agree of the, the next month to read White Fragility. And Ron, with your permission, we could carve out 10, 15 minutes, actually in the agenda for some discussion about it.
Okay.
And that is, okay, Delphine, stop taking minutes for a minute. This has to be different than the book club that I'm in, that I'm in. The conversation is who read the book? Who liked the book? And do you want white or red wine? That's a great book club. We love it. But, but, but if we can, okay, now we're back on record. If we can, yeah. If we can, you know, carve out, if we make that commitment to carve out that time on, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
And, and we can maybe just send an email to, to everybody, folks who aren't here.
Commissioner Perry, did you mean the special meeting on June 25th or the regular meeting in July?
The regular meeting in July. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Suzanne.
Could I suggest, I, I really appreciate Joe bringing up the implicit bias rather than the lightning word race. You know, we all have implicit biases and that's what we need to, at least for me. I'm, you know, I am who I am and you are who you are. And let's, let's talk about that relative to our society we're in and figure out what we're doing wrong.
Well, Joe, if you've got some of the resources on that, would you share them with Suzanne or Ron, you know, so, and then get it out so we can start working on that particular piece?
Okay.
Absolutely.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Any other new business books?
Ron, can I have a copy of what you were talking about this morning? In your?
The comments?
The comments.
Okay, yeah. I, because I, yeah, those were my notes.
Oh, I just, I just.
Okay, yes.
Are you sharing that with the?
I am. That's, I wanted, that's going to be part of what I sent out.
Okay, okay. I just want that. I just, oh, no.
As I heard it, I said he's going to be at the next purpose-built community.
Yeah.
He'll talk on the stage.
But that, and then, I mean, what you were talking about, the discussion on race, that's a really good book. It's called The Color Law.
That's, The Color Law.
Some of the things that I, and that's a really good book to understand some of the historical things that it sort of manifests now that I was trying to talk about. Yes.
Richard Rossignol was scheduled to come and speak in April and got canceled. But he was being brought in by the Henry R. Smith Foundation.
Okay, yeah.
I rescheduled that.
Okay.
So that would be, it would be trans. They had, they brought in Beverly Tatum earlier in the year, the, who wrote Why Are All Black Kids Sitting in Cafeterium? Or Why Are All Black Kids Sitting in the Cafeterium? And Commissioner Benassi was attended that and probably others, but he and I, so, and that was really thought about. You know, I just think we have an opportunity that can't sponder.
And I just, I sent an email to Alfonso and Ken. Haven't heard from Alfonso, but Ken somehow or another didn't get on his schedule, so he apologizes for not being here. He's asking me how to get on the virtual meeting to watch us. And I'm clueless on that. You just see the back of my head.
That's it. I have an AOL account, so.
A new guy. What?
Other comments? Any thing for the Budget and Finance Committee? Anything they'd like to share? Development Committee?
We have met with Mike Clark and have a lot of things going. I will take all the time to go through them, but we, we're looking at our relationship with the city as far as property and, and trying to, you know, kickstart either, you know, do something with this land or, you know. Let's look at each one of them and we're going to be, we're going to be more aggressive about the Development Committee as we move forward.
Okay. And I know that Donna is going to be sending out some emails about the next committee meetings. There is one little, in the future meetings on the Commissioner's Budget Workshop. The slide says 10:00 AM. The narrative says 9:00 AM. So which one is?
Is it 10?
10.
It's 10.
And I believe it's 10 to 12.
It doesn't matter, just one or the other.
10.
10 a.m., okay, that's good. Anything else before we move into the closed session? Okay, then I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Be resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended the Act to discuss the following matter, which is specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. One, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711(a)7 of the Act. May I have a motion?
Okay.
Okay, we're ready. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712.D of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore upon motion duly made and seconded, being resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting; and two, only such public business matters as were defined in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Ms. Collins?
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Aye. Thank you very much. Now I have to ask the moderator, did we receive any questions or calls since our last request for that?
We have not received any questions or calls.